Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, regular meeting of the Stafford School Board. What I'm going to do is I will ask each member who is participating to just state their name and district for the record as our role call for this evening.
Patricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood District.
Elizabeth Warner, Lucas Flyburnt District.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth.
Emily Young, Garrisonville.
Susan Randall, George Washington.
Irene Hollerback, Acquahia District.
All right. All of us are present this evening in one shape or form. Next, we will move on to the approval of the agenda and I will ask whether Ms. Hollerback has a motion.
Yes, I move to approve with an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to add an extra item to action as 9.03, which is the purchase of 1,200 Chromebooks as requested by the superintendent.
Dr. Kuzner? All right, that has been moved in second when we get to that item. Dr. Kuzner, I will have you just brief that item. Is that acceptable to everyone on the board?
Yes.
Doesn't that have to be recorded then? Yes, but I was just, okay, for Dr. Kuzner to give his introduction at that time as opposed to now, if anybody needs information prior to the vote. If not, there's a motion to approve the agenda as amended, adding a 9.03 action item. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. We will start off before I turn this over to Dr. Kuzner for his update. I just wanted to state to the board, I think we'll follow the same process that we did last Thursday. I will call on everybody on each agenda item and just make sure whether anybody has a comment to make. I think that's easier so we don't talk over each other. I thought that worked well. So I just wanted to state that before I turn it over to Dr. Kuzner for an update regarding the staff of the school division and COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to focus on two documents that are on the superintendent COVID report that people could find on Board Docs. As you know, I think I've already shared with the school board that we created a division-wide task force of teachers, administrators, parents, and community members. What I want to just quickly share with you is the format we are using to gather our information. Just so you know, have the end in mind, the end in mind is that the task force on, will finish their work on June 8th. We'll work on an executive summary than a report that will help me in two ways. One, the administrative decisions that I can make and then also bring to the school board policy or procedural recommendations that you would need to make. So that's the purpose. We're looking at three different areas. One, if the school system was able to open up on our date or this 10th with face-to-face instruction. But what are some of the things that we need to consider? You know, the five areas that we're looking at. Academics, equity, student wellness, system recovery, which includes finance, transportation, food services, and staff support, staff retention. What if we were able to open up on August 10th, but we had to do limited face-to-face instruction? And we would have to also have a social distancing requirement. What if we were able, what if we were told we were only able to open up at another date that wasn't predetermined? But we were open to face-to-face instruction, maybe limited or social guidelines may still be in place. And then third, which is different than the state task force, they did not consider this, but I think it has to be considered. What if we started and then stopped? What are some of the temporary closure issues that would impact our school system? And obviously, you guys, the school board has been extremely responsive in recognizing that there's a high probability. Regardless of what we do, virtual learning will be in our narrative for the 2021 school year. So I don't, just want you to know, I won't go over the forms. You have the forms. They're on Board Docs. I've actually sent them to you before. You see the co-chairs of the five committees that I just defined. Today, we had our, so every Tuesday morning, Dr. Lane, our state superintendent, has a meeting with all the superintendents across Virginia. And today he had the deputy commissioner of the state Virginia Department of Health present. I shared with you on Board Docs, I shared with the public the entire presentation. I just want to quickly just bring your attention to the last five pages of that presentation. With an understanding that this presentation is really targeting the business community. But the last few slides, because the audience being superintendent, she included things that school systems will need to consider, okay? And one thing I just, again, you know that this Friday, Virginia's going to go into phase one and then eventually hopefully a phase two, and then a phase three, and then a phase four. But phase three is when the schools will really be in a position where we could begin to have some face-to-face instruction. What's important though, it's not linear. It's not going to say we'll have two weeks of phase one, we'll have four weeks of phase two, and then we'll have, you know, it's going to be driven by data. And again, so the pages that you have in that PowerPoint share with you the metrics that they're using. Okay, how many people are being tested, how many are tested positive, what, hospital beds and so on. But what I do want to then destroy your attention to, and these are some of the things that our committee is already looking at, that the work has already started. That people who are vulnerable, and that's children and parents. I got an email from a parent of a student that I don't mind mentioning, I won't mention student's name, at Colonial Forge High School, and the student has an immune deficiency. And she wanted me to know, and I said, whatever we do, we will take every step to make sure your child is taught in an environment that's safe for your child. Continue social distancing, face coverings we recommend in public. So that's phase three. And then consideration, continue to practice good hygiene and implement personal protective measures. I've asked Chris and John Anderson and Robert Adams to begin to look for portable sinks that we could put throughout our schools. Right now, at the middle and high school for sure, you have to go to the bathroom to wash your hands. And there's a lot of kids to go to a few bathrooms. And sometimes unfortunately, the soap dispensers are either vandalized or not working. So if you've gone to large outdoor events, concerts, something like that, you'll see portable sinks. And that will have soap and water. And we're looking at strategic places to put them throughout the school. So we make sure children, students, and staff are following hand washing. Back in March, all the letters, all the conversation was about hand washing. Still critical about covering your face for coughing and all that. Those conversations have not been the priority conversations, but those are still the most important things that our students and staff have to deal. Social distancing, maintaining physical distance between folks, environmental surface cleaning at home and in community settings such as schools or workplaces. One of the meetings I was at, something again that I didn't think about, most people wouldn't think about. But a school system is removing all their vending machines. Because, you know, you go to vending machines, you touch the vending machines, okay? So, you know, we have to look at constantly sanitizing. Just so you know, before you got here, Jay did that to all your computers and your desk. You are clean at least for an hour and a half. If it goes beyond that, you're on your own, okay? So, so we're taking those steps. And critical, and we're going to talk more to the school board about this, but we have to have very flexible schedules for our staff. People who feel sick should stay home. People who are vulnerable population should stay home. And then I just want to just quickly mention the slides that are specific to schools. It's your last two slides. Considerations for K-12, enhanced physical distancing, limitations on gatherings and extracurricular events to those where physical distancing can be maintained, support hand hiking, non-essential visitors and volunteers, encouragement of use of face-to-face covering when physical distancing is not possible, communal spaces, dining playgrounds, closer stagger use. Another example I heard today, which is again, right now, parent drop-off, we could drop off at any of our schools, 400, 500 kids all at one time. Maybe we need to look at, these are all maybes. Right now, we're just asking the questions. Eventually, we'll come up with the answers. Maybe we do A to K from 8 to 8:30, and 8:45 to 9:15, we do L to Z, okay? And something like that, you know, to prevent too many people at one space. Looking at children belongings and so on. And then the last slide, again, this is on Board Docs under my presentation. Shared equipment, oh, I said that. Develop, oh, maybe that was all.
That was it.
That was all.
The shared equipment is the next line.
Oh, okay.
But I think you covered it all.
Thank you.
Yeah. You were right.
So, yeah, anyway, I don't know. I have a lot of papers here. My point is that the task force is looking at all of these issues. And I put parents on the task, most of the parents that are on the task force were assigned to the one that will look at things about schedules, okay? They're at the system recovery one. That's the one that I have, Dr. Stemples along with three other people. A lot of principals and teachers are on that committee. That's the one that will help us with schedule and distancing issues. Every committee is remarkably important. You saw in today's V S B A briefings that you get 5:00 in the morning about the mental health of children. I know I keep bringing it up, but it's really, really an issue. It's the mental health of our staff. And some of you have spoken to me, I see my neighbors often because I walk a lot, the mental health of our parents. So there's a saying going around that you have to have Maslow before you have Bloom. That if people are not healthy, all the other things are going to be very difficult to accomplish. So I do want to thank, we have almost 90, a little bit over 90 people that are on the task force. And some didn't have a choice, to be honest, but many volunteered, to be honest, which is very good. So that's my report. Every meeting, I will keep you informed on the work of the task force. We also will have a Google Doc where people are adding things. I will make sure Angie sends that to you so you could watch the task force at work, the five committees, so you're fully aware of the thinking of the task force as it's going, taking place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kuzner. Next, we'll, we talk about citizen comments. Of course, at this point in our, where we are, we are not having people come. Again, there's always the invitation to the public to send emails to the, to board members so that we can reply or to certainly reach out to us. Next, we have our board committee reports. The governance committee report will be delivered. Ms. Randall, can you pass the overview, please?
Sure. The governance committee met last week. Our first order of business was talking about code of conduct for employees. And we have vetted it through the governance committee. We have had our school board attorney look at it. Mr. Burnett has looked at it. And now Dr. Kuzner is helping us with a technology task force to kind of make sure that we are open to the ideas that how teachers, especially now this has happened. It kind of has changed a little bit our original thinking somewhat. So they're going to look at it so we can make sure it's looked at through all the eyes. It will be part of onboarding for new teachers and be shared with all. But we want to make sure that we get it right. So we're trying to go through as many different pieces. Even Ms. Parrish, our school board attorney, added a couple of things that we hadn't thought of regarding our nondiscrimination policy and making sure that there are, there's a way for violations to be reported. The second thing we talked about was planning the retreat for our board. Ms. Hollerback recommended highly because we do have to be sensitive to those board members that are working, to engage it on a Saturday. So, and to kind of narrow down specifically in talking with Dr. Kuzner and Ms. Hollerback and Ms. Hazard. We realized that to work, we have a strategic plan that's up in two years. But to do any kind of tweaking to it right now would be a huge undertaking. So we thought, let's, because governance is new, let's start a little smaller in just focusing on the board, our roles and responsibilities, and things that we can do to be better board members, both together and obviously working with our superintendent. I looked at V S B A. They will only do it remotely. They will okay us to do it on a Saturday. And from 9:00 to 1:30 or 9:30 to 2:00, they have to be guaranteed that we have 100% participation. I also looked at another service and they, his name is Kevin Kastner, I believe. And he has offered to come to us. And his is a little more expensive, but it will also have a couple of different elements. I liked that it was a little more in-depth, where he will call and interview us ahead of time to kind of gather our strengths and weaknesses through his eyes and then put us together with scenarios that govern our roles and responsibilities. So still vetting that, I'm kind of leaning towards, Holly came up with a great idea that maybe in lieu of trying to find a place, that maybe since this is working for us here at North Stafford, to meet that, you know, if we're in the social distancing realm, that's okay, we can work it out here. And if we're, if we can get closer, we can get closer. So that's what we're working on. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're going to, next, we're going to move on to our board member comments. Again, we'll just go around in turn. You want to start us off?
Well, I think I'm going to pass this evening. I'm in the wait mode to see what happens. I'm curious as to whether we're going to be able to open on August 10th as our schedule comes up. And I would like to see if the next briefing we have, if you can give us any options or alternatives, Dr. Kuzner, with respect to that opening, because it doesn't look like things are moving quickly. And I think we need to proceed with caution in any event. So that's what I'm looking forward to. I'm hearing from many parents, some are very pleased with what's being offered and the communications with the teachers, and some have not so much to say because there really isn't the same communication. And I know we're doing everything we can, but if there's any way that we could encourage in this last few weeks that are left, the communications with the, with the parents with respect to the students and their performance, that I think would be helpful. And also may help our teachers in identifying where the work is going to be needed to catch up on, when we start this whole year. Thank you.
Dr. Warner?
I don't really think I'm going to have any comments tonight. I'd just like to end Dr. Kuzner's leadership and express my gratitude to the various task forces that are trying to figure all this out. It's really all we have tonight.
Dr. Case?
So I attended the Drew Middle School sixth grade orientation, which was virtual about two weeks ago. And it was really great to see our staff trying to come up with creative ways to solve problems, given the situation that we're in. And I hope that that was helpful to families. And I just want to mention that my understanding of, we use this term, school opening versus, I think for some people that means there wouldn't be any learning. We're sort of in the process, I guess, of trying to figure out whether, if school will start, it just might not start in the building. Or maybe we wait to start so that it can start in the building, but there are lots of different things. So we might want to work on our definitions or language so that people understand that distinction. But I want to thank everybody. I also want to thank Dr. Kuzner and Chris Walmer for all the hard work helping us with that budget that had to be reduced by many millions of dollars.
Ms. Young?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So I enjoyed, was it yesterday that our music teachers were singing? I really enjoyed that. And I noticed some of them thought my kids, and I was like, ooh, they're showing my age. But it was beautiful. So thank you. They are also unsung heroes to me. On April the 7th, I was invited on a federal COVID response update with Senator Mark Warner and Senator Tim King to assess local schools to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. So I just want to remind everyone that it is a pandemic. It's not a hoax. So this is real, right? And that I noticed in my neighborhood, kids are still running around because they want to play with each other. And I asked some of the kids, hey, are you doing physical distancing? And they said, I'm trying my best. And so I am taking that into the schools and trying to figure out how we're going to do it because it's going to be hard. And so I just want to make sure that we think about that. And I heard, Dr. Kuzner, thank you so much for working on the task force and bringing everybody together. But I heard where you made comments on it's either physical distancing if we can do six feet. Well, a lot of them are not going to be able to do six feet, or they may not want to do six feet because they're coming together after such a long time away. So we need to figure out if we have the latest and greatest from CDC, is it saying physical distancing and masking? Or is it saying or? So that's a very, you know, that word needs to be identified if it's like that. Because wearing a mask, I'm protecting everybody else. You wear a mask, you're wearing it for me. I'm wearing this for you. So, yeah, so in reference to those school openings, I just hope that we're planning on doing it safe. I am for early school, trying to do some of those cases that are being left behind. But of course, taking precautions and measures that will make sure that we decrease infection and decrease severe illnesses on some of these kids that we've mentioned, for example, one that had immune system. So on, yesterday, I visited the Kinnevento office managed by Roxanne Vandis, Equity and Accountability Person. This office had no chairs. There are some unsung heroes. I expected, you know, just to just get there and help. There was one person and she was doing everything. And it was awesome to see her extending help to visitors and individuals that are homeless, that are coming, that don't have any food. There are people, mothers and even kids that are independent now because they're 16 or over, high school students that are pregnant and getting food. So we need to remember those homeless students and those students that have little kiddos that are three and four years old. So I just want to make sure that these homeless kids are being transitioned into a Head Start. And our Head Start shouldn't be first come, first served. It should be the need first. So we should have some kind of correlation of those kids that are homeless and that the needs of those parents that have kids that are Head Start, they should be Head Start, that we identify those early, help them out, because that's what I heard and that's what I saw her doing. And I just want to make sure that she has an opportunity to do that. And so that's very, very important to me. Yeah, that's all I had. I don't know, are we allowed to ask about the governance? Or is there going to be an opportunity to ask about the governance committee results? So I just want to know because we have not been able to listen. I just heard you talked to a lawyer. Is that something that needed to come to the board for permission first? Or I don't know how that happened, like, so I just need to know if it's something that was, if it's already done, it's done. But I thought those things need to come to the board so that we can decide if that's what we want to do. So somebody, and then you asked about you trying to involve everyone. I think, I did not hear HR director. I heard Dr. Kuzner's name, but I don't know if you involved the HR director?
Yes.
To be part of that, okay. So, yeah, maybe I didn't hear that part.
We checked with him too.
Okay, yeah. And then, yeah, constituents, they called me and said that she saw, she listened to the governance meeting and she told me that there was discussion about board members on there that weren't present. So we just need to be mindful of what we're seeing on these meetings, especially if we're trying to have a meeting to come together. We just need to make sure that that's what we're doing. And that's the reason for us having these discussions to have a retreat. And that's all I have. Thank you so much. Sherman, Joanna?
Okay. I would like to say thank you as a new board member, Dr. Warner and I, having gone through a budget process that we thought we were really going and getting somewhere, only to slide back a little bit. But still to keep it positive. And Chris, I have to say, you know, the information that you shared when we had our one-on-one with you and so that we won't be caught up as much as we could be to learn the process, I thought was huge and helpful. And the recommendations I thought were very thoughtful. But even where we were differing on things, I liked seeing how everybody had a way of working together as a team to get the win-wins as opposed to, you know, me over you or my concern over your concern. So I just appreciated being a part of that with this whole board. And, you know, as the learning goes forward, I have a student, my student, my son, who is part of this new, the four-by-four, who has to do the continued learning, not happy. He thought he was done. But I'm happy because I didn't like seeing Algebra II come screeching halt at 50%. So I do appreciate the fact that we have an opportunity to make those kids complete, completely before they move on. And I also echo Ms. Healy when she says, there are some families, and you can see it on social media, you hear it from our constituency that tells us, you know, how ungrateful these teachers are. Then you hear the teachers talking to us about how concerned the parents are. And then there are some that, you know, haven't done as much for communication, but realizing that too much might be just too much. So it's definitely a new realm for us. And I appreciate that you have a task force that'll help guide us to continue to do better and make our system better and pace it at a way that it makes all the kids successful and the teachers, families, and administration. And I hope they all plan a vacation at some point.
Ms. Hollerback?
Yeah, I don't have really, I don't have a lot, much to say, but I do want to take this opportunity because I haven't said it yet. I know that since this whole COVID thing kind of fell in our laps, Dr. Kuzner and staff have been working tirelessly to keep us afloat and keep us, you know, operating and all that other good stuff. And I just wanted to let you know that as a parent and as a school board member, I appreciate everything that you're doing. So thank you to you and thank you to the staff.
What size is your head, Dr. Kuzner? I think I need to buy you a helmet.
Where the helmet come? That'd be palatable.
I'll just, I'll just wrap up our board member comments, just reiterating, thanking everybody for the hard work that is being done. And I just wanted to also say to those in our community, I'm always thinking of, you know, the whole scale. You know, most of you know I have a heart for our seniors and I know that our teams are working as hard as they can to try and figure out what can we do for our seniors. And so much of that is of course going to be driven. But I really appreciate the thoughtful emails that I receive from the principal of my daughter's school every week, keeping us up to date, saying, here's the new, you know, here's what's coming. You know, the day that they give out the cap and gowns, I think it's next week. It's a little bittersweet, I have to say. So I'm just saying to everybody and to our seniors and to our seniors' parents, we are really trying to come up with something that will work so that our kids do get some of that closure before they move on to whatever their next path may be. And then thinking at the other end of the scale, how we're reaching out to our kindergarteners is of... And then thinking at the other end of the scale, how we're reaching out to our kindergarteners is of, I'm not going to even say concerned, but I think that's something that I hope we don't lose as we continue to talk about that. Because many of the places we talk about kindergarten are in our doctor's offices and, you know, all those different places. That's how we recruit also for Head Start. So I think that's just an area that as we move forward is really making sure that we get the largest net possible for all of those students that are going to be joining us. And so I know we do a great job, but I think that's something even this year we have to even become more creative as we do to try and make sure we find our students and get them registered as soon as possible. Because we don't know our delivery model, as Dr. Jason very well alluded to. Opening may not mean what everybody is thinking. So again, I applaud everybody. And the other part that I, the other word that comes to mind is balance. And I think right now most people, and I will include myself, find balance right now a difficult concept because this is so different. And I just wanted to say with regard to some of the discussion on the, at the governance committee that I felt very important was as we are now so connected, there, it's much harder than to say that the school day ends and my concern becomes the burnout of our staff if they are on 24/7. So part of the discussion that we did have was I don't want teachers at 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock at night to be on things and be reachable. Not saying, because I know the love that our teachers have for our students, but they also have families and I think that balance part is something that from a mental health perspective, and that is not my area, but I even know for me that word balance seems sometimes difficult. So that was some of the discussion because it is for the protection of all, but especially our staff's time. So again, thank you to everybody. And next, we will move on to Dr. Kizner and superintendent comments.
Thank you. So I do again want to reiterate what you already said. I've seen the best of our people, I have to tell you. I just, you know, I've just seen the best of everyone. So I thank everyone and I thank the school board. You guys have been great partners. So it's been a really, really good team. And you're right, we're every day we learn and when we think we knew it, we learned that maybe there's another way to it. So and we are, and we have tried to do a balance of, you know, every school system I believe did it the way they felt at the time was the best way to do it. And now we're all reflecting. And just to finish up on something great, I always get worried about highlighting one school because I like to highlight all thirty-three sites. But I do want to recognize that this Saturday, our state superintendent, Dr. Lane, is going to participate. Conway is having a virtual race or something. And he is going to say a few words to start the race. So 7:45, you know, that's really great. So this partnership has gone beyond just Stafford County, that everybody's trying to support each other. So I know Dr. Lane is not listening now, but I do want to thank him publicly. A couple of other quick things. Mr. Bo Wright said you had emailed out the contract. If you have questions, just please call her or email her. Also, she is going to contact you anyway. Next board meeting, so the state adopted a model, a state model code of conduct. And it's not really complicated, but I think it's good for her to spend as much time as you would like going over it. She'll send you the policies. There's no action for two weeks. It'll be two weeks after that. But just so, you know, this environment, it's hard to do it. Information with something that involves. So anyway, she's going to be reaching out to all seven of you and then you decide how much time you need to go over it. The other thing that I was going to, that's on board docs, but I'm going to allow Chris to go over it when we go over the budget. I gave you the Title I school distribution, but I'll provide context for why I'm giving it to you. And then the last thing, which I know you know and a lot of people know, Mr. Alan Hicks, I'm very, very glad, accepted the position to be principal at Stafford High School. He's done an exceptional job at Hampton Oaks and will now work towards getting an exceptional principal at Hampton Oaks as we're working to get an exceptional principal at Drew Middle School. So thank you for that episode.
Thank you. Our next items concern consent. Is there a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve five items on consent. Is there any discussion of any particular item? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, I will say that motion carried unanimously. All right, our next item is Action Item 9.01, which is adoption of the FY21 budget. I believe before, I think before we make a motion, let's have the presentation normally. I know we do it that way, but I think there are some new items. So in case there's any way we need to amend or anything, I think, or Dr. Kizner and Mr. Fulmer, whoever is going to take that show.
Mr. Fulmer, excuse me. Guys are, you heard enough.
Yes, hold on.
Chairman, since we will most likely have a discussion, question, should we have a motion to support?
Sure.
The record, if so, I'll make a motion we approve and of course, if we want to amend it later, we can always.
Second, okay. All right, that's fine. So there is then the motion on the table. And since it does say just adoption of the FY21 budget, if there are certain things you want to call out and amend the motion, we can do so. Mr. Fulmer?
All right, thank you. Want to draw your attention to, I emailed you out a document today. It's also attached to the agenda and you should have a hard copy in front of you. It's just a front and back page document that summarizes the changes that we discussed and then we've made since the May 7th meeting last week. So on the front page, page one, the top half of that shows our actual adjustments from that May 7th meeting. So I'm going to go through those quickly. And then everything else, there are no other changes to the budget as we discussed on May 7th. So the first thing, as we discussed on May 7th, was adding three elementary school assistant principals. Based on that discussion, we went back and worked with other staff and identified the funding to add the fourth elementary school principal. So there are now four elementary school principals at a total cost, or sorry, assistant principals at $450,000. Prior direction, added the Assistant Director of Special Education. Two teacher growth positions were reduced. A reduction of the high school security officers, that is not existing positions. Those were additional positions that we were trying to add. We increased the budgeted salary lapse by $100,000. An adjustment to the security infrastructure by $100,000. In order to find the funding for the additional assistant principal, we are able to identify some professional development that could actually shift over into Title II grant funding. So nothing was actually cut from the budget. We were able to identify a federal source for that and it moved out of the operating fund. That was savings in the operating fund of $122,000. And if you recall, when we presented last week, we had a very small balance of approximately $23,000. So all of that nets out to a balanced budget. Are there any questions on that? Below, I just list the positions that are remaining in the budget. So you will see at the very bottom of that listing of positions are the four elementary school assistant principals, as well as the nurses we discussed last week and the Assistant Director of Special Education is right above the elementary school assistant principals. On the back is just a summary, a very similar format that was in the presentation last week. It shows our total changes in revenue and expenditures summarized. The very last table there, it's only three lines total. It shows our total revenue increase of $17.7 million and the expenditure increase of $17.7 million, which brings us to a balanced budget. The budget resolution is attached to your agenda and it would show a total operating budget of $323,9249.
All right, what I'm going to do is just go around individually to see if anyone has questions or comments. Ms. Randall, how about we go reverse? We'll start with you.
I don't have any questions. The only comment I would say is yay that you got a fourth one figured out for us. I appreciate that.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, I was just trying to figure it out, but I think I did. It says new stipends. So you just, and then the amount is $157,000. So you adjusted $1 million and then the last?
Yeah, the school board approved budget, we had $1.2 million in stipends. We reduced that by almost $1.1 million. The only amount that left is to adjust for our new teacher, or sorry, not new teacher, our standard load SOQ, which is from the state.
Okay, I'll just do it for you. Then same thing for the, you added this expanded summer learning?
Yes, ma'am. So we are, we have some of the grants funding, but we also are carrying over operating money from FY20. So we have a prior year care report item in our revenue line is right above that of $1 million. $500 of that million is going to be designated for our summer remediation learning throughout the year.
So we're going to have how many weeks?
Well, we have six weeks, but also a expansion of more students. So it's more days and more students.
Okay.
And smaller class sizes, to be truthful.
Okay, it's summertime, you can use the field outside, sapplefield and especially when there will be birds. Okay, great. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Appreciate you. No, it looks good and I appreciate all the hard work. Thanks.
Dr. Warner?
I think it was excellent and I appreciate all the effort you put into these. I have no questions or questions.
Ms. Young?
I'm glad you were able to find that fourth.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So we're halfway there, almost. I just wanted to note for the record that the reduction in the security officers in the high schools is not a reduction in anything we have now. You mentioned these new positions. But in our discussion at the work session, I think we talked about evaluating the need for these positions and how they would actually function to best meet the needs in the high schools. And that's something that we are going to do over the course of the coming school year and be in a position next budget season to determine what would be appropriate in this regard.
Ms. Hollerback?
I don't have anything. Thank you. And thanks, Chris, for all your work on this. This has been pretty seamless, so thanks.
My comments are really parallel everybody else's, I guess, going last. Again, thanking you all for the amount of work. As much as it is being presented to us as a, I'm not going to say an easy decision, but a very balanced, sorry, using my word again, decision for us. Please, I want the community to know and I know each board member knows, there are things that are on the cutting room floor here to pass this budget. And it is something that we, as a board, will be addressing as we continue to move forward. Every day, as Dr. Kizner usually tells me, if I talk to him early in the morning, he'll say something along those lines, but by 5:30, this could be something different. We are in such a changing circumstance that I do believe that the flexibility that we have tried to put into this budget to plan for possible further reductions in revenues going forward in that time. I really appreciate that type of forward-looking from our board. And I do appreciate the assistance we're going to be giving our Title I schools. And I look forward to hearing as we get through the year of how that position is used and the benefits that it can bring to all of those schools. So with that, does anybody need a second pass or was everybody pretty good?
Yes, exactly what I thought.
Sure.
And Chair, I would just like to say that it's unfortunate that some of the things that had to be cut, teacher staff, fixing the compression scale, these are priorities I know for all of the board. And it's something I wish that we could address. But we are in an unprecedented time, facing an unprecedented crisis and we have to be conservative and we have to be thoughtful about these changes. Thank you.
And the only other final comment in that is I do believe the board, as we move forward, and Dr. Kizner and I have discussed this in general, is really keeping a watch as we move through the year of any new requirements, how the revenues are tracking much more than maybe, I'm sure Mr. Fulmer's like, yes. In prior years, we can wait till quarterly or we can wait, we may be addressing or at least examining that much more often. And I think that's something we as a board and all boards will be having to do as we move forward. All right, with that, there has been a motion on the table to adopt the FY21 budget as presented and with the accompanying budget resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to 9.02, which is a construction contract for air conditioning in our kitchen. Is there a motion?
And Chair, I would like to make a motion that we adopt or accept this construction plan to get those air conditioners fixed.
Second.
All right, there are several options presented. If we want, we can have the motion on the table and then discuss options unless you all have a preference for any of the options that we can discuss.
Just a quick question, Chris, what exactly was the funding amount we had set aside for this?
I know it's in the agenda, I don't know.
It's the 543,400.
It was 543 or something.
539, okay. Second line in bold. No, no, there was a reason because I missed it the first time. Oh, there it is. My screen wasn't there for it. Okay, I just, well, I think this is, you know, one of the things that getting this done now would certainly be more cost effective if the funds were there. Because I would imagine that if we have to postpone this, those costs are going to increase. So I, given that we are under the allocation we had set aside for this, I'm perfectly comfortable with option one. And then I'm going to choose option two. Let's go, let's start with option one. Who, the second or was that Ms. Randall or? Ms. Hollerback, I'm sorry, Ms. Hollerback. Would you be acceptable to discussion, at least as the motion on the floor being option one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I will go around, Dr. Warner, you went first. Do you have any further comment, especially Ms. Hollerback as the second or do you have any comment?
Just for the record, this money has already been appropriated, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Randall, any comment?
I just think that I'm in favor of option one because still in the wings are other schools that we need to do. So the more we push off any of these first four, just means that other schools are going to get pushed back. And I kind of want to get, if we can move past pushing off things as much as we can and this has been appropriated, I'd like to continue.
Ms. Young?
This was one of the recommendations. Option one was recommended by the FAB, so I stick to, I stand with that.
Dr. Jason, I will be supporting option.
Ms. Healy?
I'm going to be supporting this because the funding has been allocated. It's been identified as an issue that we have not been able to afford to fix for a number of years. And particularly with our early school start, it's going to be, I think, very much appreciated by our staff and nutrition.
I as well will be supporting for many of the reasons that my colleagues have stated. I do believe we need to get started. If approved tonight, I guess my question to Dr. Kizner to, I don't know if Mr. Anderson is on, then this can start quickly. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can I ask a question? I know Dr. Kizner and I got to tour Ferry Farm and we saw how some of the project timelines had to switch a little bit because of availability. Is there any issue with any of the things that we need, parts-wise, equipment-wise, to get this done on time? Because like I said, I know some of the things at Ferry Farm, because of manufacturing, are delayed. are delayed, so I didn't know if that was the case.
Yeah, John is working with the vendors. There's some of the actual equipment that may be delayed because of production issues.
Sure.
But the actual, what needs to be done while students are out of the building is the physical work, so they can have all that done and then drop the units basically on the roof of the buildings and then hook them up at a later date.
Okay. And I, and just so that I'm not making myself unclear, Ferry Farm is, is going along fine. It's not being delayed because, it just had to change course, but things are still getting done. I don't wanna make it sound like it's not getting done. Thank you.
All right. Oh, yes, Ms. Young?
I just wanted to piggyback. I've asked this question before, but I thought you were gonna ask, it's sitting on my hands on that one. Although, and I think Mr. Anderson said, he told me no, so there was no conflict with putting this in at the same time that they were still completing the project, because he said they were in two different locations.
Yep.
Right? Or so.
Yep.
I do have one question. Two of these schools are doing a meal program, so is that gonna be affect the installations?
So it could, most of the meals that we're preparing are cold meals, so it's not gonna have a significant impact. We'll work around that and the meal program this summer may be tweaked and as the, right now, we're dealing with waivers from the state, and as those get adjusted, we might have to tweak the meal plan, delivery modeling.
Well, I just know when we first started this, Wide Water, I remember it was putting out about a thousand meals a day in a kitchen that is not very big. I've been somebody who worked in a kitchen like that once, so.
And we've already, we've already shifted some of that production from Wide Water, actually, we're at, leave to AG Wright and to try to.
But thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And you?
All right. Hearing no further questions at this time, all those in favor of nine point oh-two regarding the installation of air conditioning in our kitchens using option one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next is another action item. If, again, again, having a motion on the floor would be great, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Kizner for just some explanation.
Okay.
Motion carries for nine point oh-three.
Second.
The move in second, obviously amendment.
Okay.
So now, Dr. Kizner, if you could just give us the, you know.
Sure. So I, I'm moving as a request from Roxanna and Jay Cook. We have money now Title One, this is FY twenty Title One, that we were going to use to purchase Chromebooks for our eight Title One schools. This would be a hundred fifty per school, it would be twelve hundred collectively. There's a concern, not only in Stafford, but everywhere, the backup of getting Chromebook and other technology devices. So we, we were going to honestly formally bring it to you two weeks from now, but we think every minute counts in this, so the money's there, the total is two hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred dollars, and it's an out, it's air marking out Title One application for this.
Are there any questions for Dr. Kizner regarding his request? Ms. Young?
Just a comment. So on the Chromebooks, I think, I'm just hoping that we, we have individual RTITs that could help when they come in to help the parents with those children, or at least some kind of help to those children that have not been able to get on Chromebooks before and have some assistance on how to use them, and for sheets and all of that kind of stuff. And for those that either they don't have any internet in their area, that we have some kind of back, a team that are backup friends.
Yeah, so one of the lessons that we've learned, and some of you have shared this with me, and I appreciate it, is to put more, I'll just call it professional development, I'm not sure if that's the right term when you're working with parents, you know, mom and dad development, okay? So we're all putting together modules, we're actually creating some videos, so parents could see, some people are visual, some people are auditory, some people are both. So, so that's actually in the work that we're doing right now, or, we're also, just so you know, doing it in multiple languages. But anyway, because I think all parents, this is not just a Title One issue, there's a lot of parents.
Oh, yeah.
That could use support in navigating. That won't happen overnight, but the process is starting, it has started. And then this summer, before we get into, and I, and I appreciate Dr. Chase reminding us, that's why we're calling it summer learning, not summer school, that the learning will have it in place before the twenty, twenty-one school year goes into effect.
And then just for those parents that can't pick them up, that we have some kind of opportunity to get that to them, because, you know, they can't roll up in their car like picking up kids because they don't have that participation.
Right, that's a, also a very good point, and, and I know Jay's listening, but I will put him on the agenda. He has some ideas, he's working with some Cox Cable on how we could bring more hotspots to communities. The problem that you know in Stafford, you guys know Stafford a lot better than I do, some of your homes are so far out that what I'm gonna describe doesn't work in every community, or he's gonna describe, I just listened. But we are very sensitive, you could bring all the Chromebooks in the world out there, but if people don't have broadband access to the internet, then it's not, it's just gonna be used as a, as a nice decoration for your house, so.
I understand.
We'll work on that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Hollerback, any comment? So they can't see you. If no one else has any other comment, the only comment I would make, and I know the four board members have heard this for two or three years, Ms. Young and I, gosh, it's been almost two, three years ago that we went, and we heard about connectivity for broadband. And as much as everybody would think Stafford would be at the top, we were actually, three years ago, in the bottom of that connectivity, I believe, and have believed since then. I've gone to the board of supervisors, I know Ms. Young, it's the same thing. This is a great way that we can partner with our board of supervisors, because, again, all the devices will only connect if they can connect. And I just wanna say, I think this is an area we should reach, you know, even further across the aisle, of how are there dollars that, some may be education dollars, some may be other grants and, and other opportunities or localities to expand broadband in conjunction with their schools. So I, I would just mention that, that maybe that's a great way of having some kind of joint ownership and working together.
If I, if I could just add, it's gonna tie the governance committee a little bit, but Ms. Randall brought up something which I hope she continues to pursue, you as a board, networking with other school divisions. Today, at the, at the state superintendents meeting with superintendents, they identify the region in Virginia that has the highest percentage of families that are not connected. It's region three, that's what you're in. So using the idea of mobilizing people to impress those who are in a position to change that, I think the power of having many school boards together, along with their appropriating bodies, to influence those policy changes would be, would be important.
Would be great. So that'll be a, a work project for, for the board, but with a lot of benefit hopefully to our, to our families. All right, with that, we will vote on the approval of the purchase of twelve hundred Chromebooks. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to our information items, I would just draw the board's attention to, I'm gonna call it, it was line one of the description here, talking about the timing of this particular item. However, this is about the approval of a plan to compensate the secondary classroom teachers who have more than a hundred and fifty students. We have talked about this at length. Is there any additional comment, Dr. Kizner, Mr. Fulmer, or anyone else who's on that wants to speak to this item?
I'll just say that, so last year was the first year we had to implement this. It was something we picked up after the, actually, last year's budget was adopted, which was actually after we even built the current year's budget we're in, FY twenty. So once again, it was not budgeted, but we have the funds in our salary lapse lines for this year, so we have the funds available to cover. So we went over this last year to, to go over those changes that were in the Virginia code. The code says that we have to compensate the teachers, they don't identify amount. So last year, when we developed amount, we split the difference between principal even spot T to come up with an equal amount. And then this year, because of the shortened year, we basically prorated that for about three quarters of the year, took the same stipend amount from the prior year and prorated it for this year. That's all I have.
Where I was drawing the board's attention is the final line that talks about if approved by the school board tonight, the payments can be distributed on June first. If we wait the, the two weeks for an information and action item, the payment, the payments will be distributed on July first, though if there is any thought or potential for action, I don't.
I have a question.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Fulmer, did you, are you telling me that, that the amount of the stipend was, was reduced because it was just partial year rather than an entire year?
Correct. So, so like for, you know, for example, the first year, the stipend was fifteen hundred if you had over a hundred and fifty students in the prior year. I'm sorry, a thousand last year, and this year we made seven fifty. The second tier was fifteen hundred, we adjusted it to eleven twenty-five in the current year, just by twenty-five percent.
So I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm, so, so I, I'm not sure I'm understanding, so it's what I'm asking. So most people got their entire stipend even though the year was shortened, is that the case here too? Are they getting their, the stipend for the entire year, or are they only getting the stipend because we stopped in March? That's what I'm not clear on.
Yeah, so I, I prorated this one mainly because we, we don't have a contractual agreement with them at the beginning of the year stating you're getting X dollars. And so this isn't something that they're even aware that they're receiving until the end of the year, actually, and so we'll provide them notice after the board approves it, and we'll provide them the notice of what they're receiving and what their average student.
You know, I, I'm a little troubled with that some people got their full stipends even though they didn't have to perhaps complete what the task was, and yet these teachers are, even though they may not theoretically know about it, they're not being consistent in our policy, and, and I have a little concern about. Ms. Young, I think was next.
Yeah, sure. So, oh, one of my questions, I think, you just asked, so this is, did they get anything at all this year?
Not yet. This payment will represent.
And this is prorated?
Yeah.
Okay. So we, so for the next year, so this is just for this year, for the next year, we are authorizing, we're authorizing fifty teachers. Any of teachers in this group could take over some of this hundred and fifty students that they have?
Yeah, we actually are expecting the number of teachers qualifying for this to go down next year, because we expect with the additional growth teachers that we're adding that will positively impact this in a way to, to reduce it, so we don't have to have payout as many of the stipends next year.
Right. Because I, I don't want that we are chasing and paying the problem after the fact, but confront the problem, which is putting the teachers in place if we can.
Let me tell you, I guess it's a fact, when I talk to this, about this to a lot of superintendents, they had no idea what I'm talking about. Because they don't reach that hundred and fifty number. I'm just being truthful with you. I think one of your goals eventually, you may, may become a space issue also, is never have to pay this stipend.
Yeah.
You know, so by adding staff, the logic maybe, the math where that, that should distribute the kids more, but you also run into, we, we run into another issue, is you only have X amount of classrooms, you know, so you're moving kids around, but it's interesting because I tried to get a group of superintendents to seek a state waiver on this, but this year, you know, because it's been, and many I spoke to had no idea. And how, when I got here, I had no idea. This has been in SOQ for a while, it's not like it just woke up. I never ran into this situation prior. So we, we hope that by having more staff, and we thank you, that some of these classes will, will be not at that number, not a good number for a teacher to have on their caseload.
May I ask one question? So, so what classes are these? I mean, did, did these teachers stop having these classes when we stopped in March? So for example, is foreign language one of them? Did foreign language teachers stop reaching out to their students on March?
I don't, I, I don't wanna conclude, I think the, this, this, I, I think all our teachers are working, I think all our teachers are reaching out, while I agree with you, some teachers are reaching out more than others. I also would say that, so I, you know, I raise this concern with the chiefs, or the chiefs raised it with the principals, and, and the principals are, are talking to their teachers about reaching out to students, but the feedback I got, elementary is not really an issue to those, those teachers, you know, they know how to reach out, you know. And a lot of middle and high school teachers also, however, the feedback I got, I'm just telling what I got, okay, is we're reaching out to the students. A lot of times the parents are not aware, you know, and it's not, and, which probably makes sense, I mean, during the school year, how often do you reach out to the parents? You know, the parents, but we need to come with a way that, to again, through our information management system, where parents could track the work. It doesn't necessarily, I wanted to question is, I'm not so much, I, I mean, I would like to hear from you, up to a point, some parents, I mean, I had a parent the other day, told me, kid, you just stop school. I, I, you know, I actually mentioned it to Holly, you know, some school systems are literally doing that. You saw Arlington is stopping their school earlier, enough, let's just move on to twenty-one. We're not doing that, anybody, let's say. So I do think, you know.
What, what, my question, the point of my question was, if I have a hundred and fifty students, and I am still attempting to reach out to those hundred and fifty students even though we're not in the building, why am I not getting the stipend for the entire time? That's my question.
That was gonna be my question as well, is that.
Yeah.
You know, you still have those, you still have those teachers responsible for those students on their roster, class load, whatever you wanna call it. And so therefore, I think that, you know, it's to stop them at seventy-five, when like even coaches, you know, they stopped at twenty-five into their season, but they're getting a hundred percent. It just kind of, I don't know, they're still responsible for reaching out to those students. You know, I've heard low numbers of the, as the year goes, you know, middle school on up and high school, that the loads have been dropping off for participation, but I just, I'm concerned that their load of students and families, if you will, has not dropped. And when you were talking about even with the classroom spaces and whatnot, I think, you know, we saw this when Stafford High School was being rebuilt, about how many teachers had to go to being on a cart and not having a room. And I know, like, even when I've gone for parent-teacher conferences, I literally am walking into their teacher workroom to meet with the teacher because there's not enough classroom spaces for that teacher to be, to meet me and greet me in a classroom. I'm actually going into the workroom for my conference.
Well, let's, let's, I think you're, you're well taken. Let us, this is information.
Sure.
I, I will say also, some of the classes that were fourth quarter elec, fourth, yeah, fourth quarter electives never started, you know, especially at the middle school when they do the rotation, so, I mean, it's not.
Construction trade one in high school.
So they might have been on this, on the staff members' caseload, but they never really.
Showed up.
Saw them. So let's, let's just take a look at it and report back next week. I, I understand, I understand the comments, but there might be more.
Ms. Yen?
I was just actually using my calculator for some.
I'm doing it in my head. I'm doing the same thing.
This is too tempting to have it here. Looking at this, it looks as though the PE music teachers are not reduced at all, because if we just multiply the stipend times the number of teachers, it comes out to the total cost. And with respect to the classroom teachers, if my calculations are correct, it's only a difference of about twenty-eight hundred dollars between the stipend amount times the number of teachers and what is the total cost. So I would suggest, if in fact that is correct, that we just add that in.
So this is the, this is the prorated stipend amount, so the twenty-eight hundred dollars, I think, if you're, if you're taking the number of teachers times the stipend, it's gonna be slightly off from this total cost amount, and that's because we have teachers that left halfway during the year that we already prorated, so it doesn't come out to exact math. If we were to do the full stipend amount that wasn't prorated, it's about a sixty-thousand dollar cost.
What, how could it be different than the number of teachers times the stipend?
Because the number of teachers, of those hundred and twenty-one teachers, I mean, may- mean, may have been three or four, they either didn't start until October and worked all the way through March, or they started in August and left in January, and we prorate them.
So your correlation is not because schools stopped March twelve?
It's actually both reasons. So we prorated the total stipend amount to begin with, and then we also prorated if the teacher was not here for the full year.
That's what I understand.
But if we just do this math, it's, it's under three thousand. I mean, if you multiply one hundred and twenty-one times seven fifty, it comes out to ninety thousand.
Yeah, so if you do one hundred and twenty-one times a thousand, because that would be the full year stipend amount, would be a thousand, not seven fifty. That's seventy, seven fifty is seventy-five percent of a thousand.
So that stipend is, right. All right, so not only is the stipend prorated, but the total cost.
Then we just have a few exceptions that are prorated because they were not full here for the full year.
What I think I'm hearing from the board is we would like some more information on giving the full stipend with further analysis, I was thinking we might be able to, but I think you all would like a little bit more consultation with HR to make sure that, and that we will see this in two weeks, is that?
I think you're, you're not as, I don't want to put words in mouth, but I'm hearing, you're not as concerned, somebody who has not been here all year, as much as stopping it on March twelve.
Correct.
I mean, they're still teaching, right?
Yes.
Aren't they still teaching? So why would we not, or this one, I mean, we're.
Yeah, it would be for those, again, for those classes that were going to start fourth quarter, that never started, how do we look at that? So I just wanted us to make sure those teachers, well, I know the answer to that, let's just come back to it, okay? We, this is what's good about information.
Sure, I think those classes didn't start, they didn't have one hundred and fifty students, so they would fall off the eligibility anyway, right?
Well, it goes to the stipends that others have received, even though they didn't.
No, I'm just asking that if that class never.
Right, with that number, you can reach the one fifty, that's a good question. Because you got, you got this?
Yeah, yeah.
And if they started teaching at then, as far as I can think. As the parent of a higher student, I can, I can say, I know there have been meetings, you know, put together of large groups, and I will say, as much as my daughter, after she would get off of those, she would feel better in having talked with some of the people, so, you know, at least I do know that they're there. So if we could just look into that, and if you would like, Mr. Fulmer, you can bring in option one, two, three, however many, but I do have a sense of what the board's requesting.
Absolutely.
All right, then moving on to our second information item, this is about the approval to renew the annual subscription to Micro Focus Enterprise Server Operating System. I believe this would be, does anybody have any questions about this particular item? All right, hearing none, our next item is ten point oh-three, the award of a service contract to ABM Services in the amount of four million five twenty-nine five thirty-six using FY twenty-one annual operating funds for custodial cleaning services. Are there any questions about this one? Ms. Young, I'll let you start.
I've asked this question before, but I just want for the record, I want to just make sure that the cleaning part, that we will recoup any monies that we came from COVID-19.
Is school hopping open?
It's, it's available.
For the additional costs?
No, that we could recoup it if we're using, if we're cleaning and, you know, teachers and stuff like that are there, you know, we're making food for the kids, and we're using some of the foods. So just as long as we're able to recoup and then reduce it from this amount, just to make sure that we're using all funds that we got.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I would just like to say, I would appreciate, I know Dr. Chase and I talked about some of the challenges that we saw with clean schools, not clean schools, but I would like to especially make mention of the one classroom that isn't really treated like a classroom when it comes to cleaning, and that's the gymnasiums, the bleachers, you know, some of the PE teachers pull the bleachers out and the kids go up in them, and they're kind of messy when they leave, and then of course, after games, pep rallies, I mean, if we're going to have this space and they may try to figure out how to use the gym, I really want to make sure we're cleaning those bleachers. I know personally that when we had to clean Stafford High School's gym for regionals, that was unbelievably disgusting, so I just want to make a special note, well, I can't even tell you what we found in those bleachers, but still, I would like to make a special note that, you know, that may be the one classroom that has a lot of kids coming up in this school year, and we really want to make sure that that's all clean. Thank you.
Dr. Chase, I was going to go, so I just want to make sure I understand, what Ms. Young was saying, whether she was asking the same question I had, which is, if the schools are closed, the learning is happening remotely, but the building itself is not in normal use, would that lower the contract payment that we are giving to this contractor?
Yeah, so we're currently working with the contractor to make sure that language is in our contract, in addition to some other stuff, so it's going through our procurement and legal reviews, so procurement and legal have worked on this quite a bit, and so we're not even ready to approve this one tonight, but we're really close and working on, on those final negotiations, and that's been the big sticking point. I mean, I don't want to call it a sticking point, it's been something we're concentrating on, I don't think the contractor or the vendor is going to have any issues at all because we've already worked with them, you know, in this fashion here.
Right, because I mean, I mean, this is part of the rationale for outsourcing this task rather than having full-time custodial staff that's employees of the school system, so we're not getting that benefit, then one has to wonder why, you know, why we're doing it. And I gather this is the same service we're currently using, I have not been mutually impressed, but I don't know what the competition's like, so.
So, so Dr. Chase is right, but I also wanted to make sure that you understood that I meant that it should be reduced if we also use our COVID-19 monies that we could recoup for the supplies, and that was the question I was asking.
Say again, I'm just, I apologize, I'm not really understanding.
We pay for all of our own janitorial supplies, and they're just providing labor.
So this is just labor? Okay, and so the supplies and things of that nature, you should be able to reduce that with COVID-19, okay? I just want to make sure that it was not like they're saying, maybe they're bringing their supplies, and yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
Ms. Healy?
I just have a question, and this relates outside of the contract, for the schools where we're doing our in-house cleaning, are we going to have some kind of resources available if they need additional resources for sanitizing the schools? And I don't need an answer tonight, but I think we really need to think about it because it's primarily a few of the elementary schools, and we have, you know, a very small custodial staff, so we need to be thinking about that if they need assistance, how we're going to meet that need.
I can respond kind of briefly on that, is ABM has hourly, additional hourly support that they can supplement our current support, so they actually do that now, if we have one of our in-house custodians that's out sick or out for an extended period of time, they can supplement with some of their contracted staff, and we will pay them hourly. In addition to that, the state has recently bid out and awarded, and has a state contract for ten different companies that we can use for sanitation, so, and that's been very recent they've come out with this, probably because of the current pandemic and things that we're going through, so if we get into a situation where we need that additional help in sanitation, we can actually dump on one of those contracts and bring in some temporary help as well.
And do we have funding set aside for that?
Yes, we have added additional funds in the operating budget.
Ms. Hollerback? Any comment?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Back to Ms. Young.
Take it back off of Ms. Healy's question, just so I could understand, were you referring to like, say, for example, if there's an outbreak?
Well, that, but just generally, I think we're going to have to have a higher standard of IG in schools, once we are back in school, than we have had in the past.
Correct, and that's, that was my discussion in the beginning of the meeting, but I want to take it a step higher, that if there is an outbreak from sometime, it's not going to be the same ABM, we need that additional company that sprays, right? So this is where that funds, that's where the funds is? Okay.
Didn't we, in addition to the budget, you know?
That's what I was asking, that's, that's what.
We're all on the same page, no one has any interest of having, and if money becomes an issue, we're going to let you know.
Sure.
This is not related, but it is related. One thing I have noticed, and you have noticed as you visit schools, the culture of the school says a lot about, there's some schools where paper and things are just, kids just think it's, I don't know what they think, they could just write things on the floor, and why that, it's an issue because we're teaching kids, this is not how you act in somebody's home, the school is somebody's home. But two, I don't want the ABM people, I want them to scrub the things that, you know, that, you know what I'm talking about, versus having to spend a lot of time bending down and picking up things that should have never landed on the floor and things of that nature, so we have, we have and will continue to talk to the principals about that, of making, and I think kids will respond to that if they know that's the expectation. Could you see some schools that, what I'm describing, does not happen? And other schools, it happens way too much, but anyway.
Like Disney, you can't have anything on the ground for more than, like, less than a minute, I think, and it has to be off the ground.
And I'll just make a final comment, sort of going the opposite, does this contract allow for sort of emergency or unplanned services, as I recall, let's say we find out a particular student or staff member comes down with something and we really need, you know, that night, you know, to, for that, for that to come in? Does this contract have enough play in it that we can call them and we're not put on the waiting list? My best example I think of is if you buy one of those services for your HVAC system, and it goes out in the middle of the, you know, blizzard, you're not at the bottom of the list, you're at the top of the list, does that make sense sort of my point?
Yeah, absolutely, and we're working that into the contract as well to make sure that we have priority in the area. And then if it gets to a point where we can't handle it in-house, and ABM is throwing everything they have at it as well, that's where we can also expand to the ten additional companies that the state has approved for emergency and sanitation.
I just want to say one thing, when, before the governor closed our schools down, we asked ABM to make sure our buildings got a super, super cleaning, and they came in on Saturdays and Sundays in the evenings, so at least from that experience, they were responsive.
It just seems like that we all have this concern, it's something I think we'll be monitoring as we move revenues and everything else, so we will be bringing that back. And with that, we will join again in two weeks' time on May twenty-sixth, and otherwise, this meeting is adjourned.
Will we make here?